It was more than a year.
Hi, John. Come on in. Sorry.
First I sit.
Oh, yeah, look. You pick a seat. I was just. This? You can, I'll just sit wherever. So, um, that's your book. You can take that.
Well, Mark's there.
Here. John, sit here if you'd like.
The other thing she says, they can't just rule this now.
Do you want to do?
We're trying to always be consistent.
Uh huh.
So pick either Park School or, or, she said, someone just says Park School.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So this one, this one, yeah, not yet. These were held.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I need to ask?
I could just.
How are you? Oh, I'll. No, actually.
Oh, I don't know.
You want to choose?
But this, that's a select one.
I give, yes, yeah, that's.
I don't really agree with this one. That's the one we get. Selectmen. No, that's, I don't agree with that. I would have said it. And then this is factually correct because.
Yes.
Put it right on the table.
You know.
I'll take that now.
Okay. I thought this would be easier. Thank you. You know what? It's not the screen that's the issue. It's, it's the laptop. How do I open this up?
You want to get, you want to get square, right?
It seems to be on this, this plate. See how? It's not the jackrabbit issue. It's my view of my computer. I was thinking of a whole view.
What do you think? Click on full screen?
Yeah, um, let me see if there's. I'm not used to this laptop.
Maybe one of those like.
You're in technical assistance, do I?
No, it's trial and error.
Sure.
I just keep.
The worst thing.
This is something that I wouldn't even have to work to do tonight. Just this one.
I get help.
This one.
Thank you. Because we're, we're posting it to the, we're going to the internet. That's.
At the end, but.
It's probably closing up right now.
I don't know. That stays, okay. Well. Well, we'll just keep everybody guessing from the live and then you'll get it from home to the full screen.
Move this into, before we start, like, right outside, somewhere, before we start.
Just a sneak peek.
If it won't take long, you certainly have to move things around. Then we'll be accurate and so we'll come back. Is this mine?
Yes, sorry. Yes.
Square that weather vane. When John arrived, she had a picture up there.
Sue did. Yes.
We call a meeting order at six oh eight.
September fourteenth.
Yeah, about that. Be informed, everybody, that the meeting is being recorded by our recording secretary with a recording device for her record keeping. Is there anyone else present who wishes to report to meeting the audience?
I would, yes.
We'll enter into a closed executive session in accordance with MESS general law to construct, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiation with non-union personnel specifically to discuss the fire chief's contract since an opening, the open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the government's party meetings. We also enter into executive session in accordance with MESS general law to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for contract negotiations with our non-union personnel specifically to discuss the chief's contract since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's party meetings. And we may just have, but those are both under MESS general laws, chapter thirty, the six and twenty one, A, one being two, production code being exception two. We'll also meet in executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for the full-time police, full-time fire, and absentee units since an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The board will not be returning to open session following those executive, that executive session. New business in front of us tonight is.
Pardon me, through the chair, may I ask a question to clarify? Is recording an audio recording or is it a videotape?
Video and audio plus an audio, Sue.
And is it for personal reasons or for publishing that? And what would it be published on? Because I know that we typically will hold our regular sessions that are videotaped. I have not received any disclosure forms from anyone stating that this meeting is being videotaped and will be published on any forum. I would take objection to it and request that we would have town council review the matter because while this is a public meeting and the public is invited to come, I personally may have objections on, as personnel director, with regard to having a personal videotape of the meeting without fully being, having that be disclosed to me or to any other employee or volunteer for the town. So I'd just like to make that objection to the record. And the board certainly can have a policy discussion about whether or not we should be videotaping work sessions. That's a policy discussion. However, I was prepared to have an informal work session with the board, public meeting, posted, duly posted, but I was not prepared to come here and be videotaped. And I do have a personal objection to it. We just wanted to state that to the record.
And I think we give you permission to go to town council and do just find out.
I, I would respectfully like to request that this meeting not be videotaped. If it's an audio recording, I have no issue with that. I do have some concerns, not just for myself, but other concerns have been brought up by other employees that would make me really hesitate to allow that to happen at today's meeting with all due respect to you, Selectmen Gant.
Do you have, just mechanically, do you, and I don't agree to them, do you mechanically have the ability to continue to audio it without videoing it?
Potentially, I have a solution. I could close the shutter and perhaps that would do it. However, what I'm willing to do is maintain it for personal reasons pending a, a comment or a response from town council and the state if it's necessary relative to doing this. I have no problem holding it until there is a.
Not, meaning not distributing it?
Not distributing, right. Holding it for personal reasons until such time as we get a reading from town council or the state, whoever, attorney general, whoever gets involved with that. I have no problem with that. I'll hold it.
We record the meetings anyway. It's, I'm not an objection to an audio recording of the meeting by all means or by any means. I just have a personal philosophy about videotaping and I wasn't prepared for that to happen at today's meeting. I would be fine with not a video but an audio recording.
Well, I, I have felt somewhat the same. I view working sessions as a, as a session where we can have legitimate cross-talk without being videotaped, without being filmed, if you will. However, I'm willing to go along with you holding it for private use until we get a review by KMP.
I would respectfully ask that it be held for private view until this matter. I don't want it to be released on YouTube or any type of social media. I have my own personal reasons for feeling that way and I, and respectfully would request the board to consider that. I show up at every regular scheduled meeting of this board, fully prepared on Monday evenings for our regular sessions, to be videotaped and recorded and, and to have our clerk, stenographer, well, she's not a stenographer, but our recording clerk to take the minutes of our publicly, publicly posted meetings. However, work sessions, I believe, are intended to be less formal, more informal, more of the back and forth. We don't make any formal votes unless there's a time-sensitive matter and I can't remember the last time we did that. I would, I would just feel much more comfortable if we weren't being videotaped. I'm okay with the audio. If the board decides to override that, I certainly understand that, but I'll take that into consideration when I discuss it with town council. I just, I don't, I don't think that it's fair that it wasn't disclosed that it would be recorded and I had to.
My commitment to personal is that I would not put it on any social media or YouTube or that. I will hold this until such time as we get a reading, that's all.
Without sharing it beyond.
Oh, yeah, not sharing. Personal, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But if town council says it's okay to record the meetings, I, even at that point, I don't feel comfortable with you. Are you saying that personal is, it's not going to be disseminated?
Pending.
For tonight?
Pending a reading, pending a reading from town council, the state, whichever is necessary.
I work for this board, so I have stated my objection for the record and however you want to decide to move forward is up to you.
I appreciate that. I will tell you that in my opinion, he will record the meeting tonight. He will hold it for his own personal use until KMP makes some sort of a decision. And at that point, this board has to decide where we go from there.
Okay, that's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, I will also be audio recording. Kim Sherwood, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item one is an overview of the new town website. If I may, since we really want so quickly anyway, I was hoping to include our attempts at approving the minutes on the August twenty first regular meeting. And since we've already said that once we go into exec session, we're not going back out, that would need to be done now. So maybe do it before we get into this substantive agenda.
Yes.
So, um, we have, for lack of a better description, draft one from Sue and myself, and then Selectmen made comments. I think of three and I think two I agree with and I believe were helpful and have been corrected, but I'm struggling.
Can you copy that?
No, I haven't.
Either fast or meetings.
So the one. He's got it. He just tried to find it. Okay, sorry. So it's the paragraph relative to, in the new business, to appointment of actual fire chief. And I'm prepared to go through all the open meeting law requirements for minutes and all that. I'm going to hold up on that given that we've already had one procedural debate tonight. And just in, in all sincerity, my initial reaction was that the word pros was out of context, which threw the whole thing off for me. And I did go to two dictionaries, one the good old whips that I actually still have in hot cover and also online. They both agree. That's what the meaning of the word. I'm not trying to get to that little semantics except I, I can't look forward. I, I get that we're trying to talk about something that happened and that Dick's not comfortable with the way I summarize it. That's okay, but I, I, I can't recommend the suggested language to the board. So can we just, what, what are you, what are you trying to say?
Well, uh, let me, uh, original, let me, let me go to the original. The original, essentially, let's see, I can't change. Selectmen Gant made a motion to amend the motion to include the language until appointed by the permanent. That's not what I said.
Okay.
The good news is it's what you said. What I said, I didn't try to include because it wasn't germane. Once we got, well, it was germane. You, you kind of cleaned up my language and so you said those words. So my changed, the changes that I made to the minutes were to reflect more accurately what happened, which was the fact, and I actually didn't make an amendment. I suggested that we discuss an amendment and I offered something. So it wasn't amendment. That was, that was seconded. I don't think it's, oh, it says seconded.
Let's aside the technicalities.
Okay.
But Selectmen Spencer made the initial, motions, that was correct, right? The first.
Yes, that, that first part is correct.
Then, then did I ultimately make an amendment?
Ultimately, you made an amendment.
Do you have any problem skipping to that point?
Yes.
Yes, this is okay.
You, you did.
Yeah, so can we then just go to the next sentences? Selectmen Lyons made a motion to amend adding. Like this whole discussion thing, let's just, we don't need to have it in there.
Instead of Selectmen Gant made a motion to amend, say Selectmen Lyons made a motion to amend to include the following language.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And then we get rid of Selectmen Gant with through his amendment.
So you, nothing about my making a, a thing or pulling it back. Okay, that's good.
Sue on that?
Now, the only question is, who actually, let me just check.
The board then voted on the amended motion.
Uh, yeah, but who, I don't remember who seconded your amendment. I have it here though. I have it. A little markup. Oh, but, but, but the, but your actual text is different. The actual text that you said based on the tape was until appointment as permanent fire chief or further action of the board of Selectmen. That's what your actual words from the tape were.
Yeah, the question I just want to ask on this, because we're going to find ourselves meeting after meeting after meeting going through and, you know, basically trying to read a transcript. My concern is that it doesn't sound like, even though I think the way it was said may be a little bit neater than this. This, in fact, as I see it, until appointed permanent fire chief or further action from the board captures the entire sense of the statement as it was on the tape. And if the minutes of the meeting as submitted by the clerk and the administrative assistant are, they don't have to be verbatim, is my understanding in that.
As long as we take, as long as we take the quotes out, as long as we take the quotes out, that's perfect.
Okay, let me, let me.
Because I want to try to simplify it and get out of the.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Just because it's confusion, let me read the, the proposal, right? Selectmen Spencer made a motion to appoint Captain Jennifer Collins Brown acting fire chief.
Period.
Seconded by Selectmen Lyons.
Correct.
Period. Selectmen Lyons made a motion to amend, you don't have to say amend a motion, that's, mention to amend, to include the language. It's my quote. You have a problem?
Just take the quote out. Just take the quote out.
Fine, take the quote.
And then it's, it's close enough.
Until appointed permanent fire chief or further action from the board.
Good.
Seconded by, uh, memory is Selectmen Jackson.
I, I, I actually, I actually seconded that.
Okay, Selectmen.
No, no, I, yes.
Seconded by someone. Then you're deleting Selectmen Gant withdrew his amendment. The board then voted on the amended motion. So. So perhaps the chairman of the team was going to approve the minutes of seven thirty.
Second. Seven, seven, seven.
Oh, seven thirty PM, I'm right, so it's August twenty first.
August twenty first, two thousand seventeen. Second.
Oh, fair.
Bye bye.
I'm going to ask Linda, there's two more minutes. I don't mean this in any way except I think we should get in the record. I really appreciate Mr. Spencer's comments, but I think it's necessary. This is from current open meeting law guide of the attorney general, just so we're not making this stuff up. Public board is required to create and maintain accurate minutes of all meetings including exec sessions. The minutes which must be created and approved in a timely manner must include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members present or absent, the decisions made and actions taken, including record of all files, a summary of the discussions on each subject, a list and documents of exhibits, or the names of people participating in the meeting. While the minutes must include a summary of the discussions on each subject, a transcript is not required. It's just the level of exactitude that's an.
No questions.
Uh, I'm, my last comment then I'll let it go. I've really invested a lot of time in working with Sue and trying to keep these minutes up and make them legally sufficient and, and, and have enough in this so that informs the public of what we're doing. But I tried to do it in an effective and efficient process. I think we have that. And we have to start cycling, recycling. You know, we, we have a system where we can, what's that phrase used? That's really, version control, you know, like you know what went out. You know what came in. So I need the help of the members to be able to, to do that and like, go in another direction. Thank you. I'd just like to clarify one little step further. I will constantly be looking for ways to purify the minutes of these meetings when it's appropriate. I don't think we need to think about changing structure. I think we need to be concerned about content and as long as the presented version is correct from a content standpoint, as far as I'm concerned, we'll move in that direction. If we get into discussions about changing, uh, structure, punctuation, style, those kinds of things, we don't need to go there, in my opinion. When you're in a psych ward, feel like nothing is ever good enough. That's negative and destructive and per its motivation and we don't. Let's just do the professional, legally adequate and get them, get them, keep them timely. Okay, let's move on. Now we can move, talk about the new town website.
Great.
I, I hope.
Which, um, we fully intend to, there's an extra seat here. There's one over here.
You'd like to move over here so you can sit better.
But we're actually playing.
It's on the floor.
Turn sideways, you can look right here.
That, I hope, is not.
Yeah.
If you're able to help, it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Popcorn?
How about a beer?
There we go. So we fully intend to have, once we go live, perhaps on the twenty fourth, we can just do another demonstration on the camera at the regular scheduled meeting so that we can introduce our residents to the new website and direct our traffic there.
You can come over here and.
There's another seat over here if you'd like to see better. Searching for a signal. Okay, hold on.
And I was going to save, keep this from, it's spinning around on top of this a little bit.
This, this thing is it. This is the, oh, there we go.
That's the CD.
Oh, boy. Beautiful. All right. Yep, it's, there is, the connection is a little loose. So unfortunately, I can't figure out how to get the full screen on our laptop, but we'll need to. Okay, so, um, took us a while to come up with a header for the, um, for the website. Curiously and ironically, at the time that we were trying to make these decisions, we did a lot of survey of just various people and staff and, and, um, at the time that we were trying to do this, we actually had the town meeting going on and people voting and talking about Donnie versus Del Far. So it seemed appropriate that we would want a header that sort of is a reflection of sort of, you know, a part of Topsfield. We're not going to be able to change that header. So the field with the trees to us really seemed to convey a sense of peacefulness to the community. Of course, the rooster and the, um, weather vane really was from a design on our new town hall project. We thought that would fit in very nicely with the overall concept. Um, we have a little Twitter bird and a, um, and a Facebook logo. We are not officially there yet, but we've asked them just to develop it so that we could see where the layout would be. Um, this middle, this middle photo in the middle, that's intended really to be like a sliding screen show. So while the picture on the top of the page is, will be the same until we get another website, this middle frame allows us the flexibility to update our pictures seasonally, coordinate, we can coordinate with the holidays. We can do flyers. We can do announcements. So really, we'll be looking to that center picture and it'll be a slideshow so that every time you leave the site, you go back in, there'll be a different photo that will show. So we're trying to create a new database of pictures. We had Kendra Kleinev, who has donated some of her work for us. And we also have Eric Roth, who is going and taking some more photographs to, so that we can store all some stock photos on the website. The beauty of the new website platform is that we're going to have a lot more versatility with regard to our access to it and our ability to make updates in a more timely manner. So the, the previous website platform was really built on really two genera, I mean, it was, it's over almost nineteen years old. And the volunteer website committee did a fabulous job creating that and trying to get people to utilize that as sort of the front page of the town and to consolidate and centralize certain information. One of the challenges that we were having was that it was built on a platform that was essentially required every computer and user to have the software loaded on their computer. So as technology has grown, we are using a web-based platform that has, um, virtual town halls and schools as our vendor. Uh, we received $10,000 grant from the state about a year and a half ago to do this project. And our original intent was to try to look for a website that was more conducive for ADA compliance, that would be easier for people to be able to find the information they need without being, um, put into Google world and the world wide web and being taken away from our website. So what this platform allows us to do is to utilize all of the, um, a lot of the work of other communities. Virtual Town Hall actually has almost, I think, a hundred, at least a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty other communities in Massachusetts. So they are pretty familiar with how Massachusetts municipalities work. Um, and yet we are able to, instead of taking a box and fitting it and just putting pictures in there, we've really done a lot of work to try to make this as useful for us and our employees and also for our end users, our citizens, so that they can find information a little bit easier than currently. The search box is prominent at the top so that everybody knows that when you first go on the website, if there's a search word you want to look for, you don't want to look at all the words and try to find it. You can put in the word and it'll bring you to a place on our site. Um, it won't necessarily, the current site will bring you to Google. But if you're looking for meeting minutes for, you, you could effectively be scrolling through pages and pages of Google minutes from, meeting minutes from towns across the world, so, um, across the country. So what we are doing is we're trying to make it easier for people to find information. And there's a lot of redundancy, but that's, that's intentional. So we've got a top bar, departments, boards, committees, community, recreation, schools, and facts. What we will do is, and I'm just noticing as we're going through this, a couple of little things that we're going to be tweaking in the next couple of weeks before we go live on the twenty second. On that top bar is intended to be focused on, you know, if you're just looking for a department, you know where to go, you're going to go right over, um, here and there'll be your dropdown and so that you can really just look at which departments. That'll give you a listing or you can just go and click and choose which type of department you're looking for, um, whether it's town services, finance. Some of these we're going through right now and we're trying to find a delicate balance between what, um, makes the most sense. The platform we're using and the information, the content that is in here was essentially built off of the prior website. We do know that we can constantly be trying to improve it. So as we're all trained, um, our administrators have had their initial training. We'll have another training. As everyone's trained, we'll all have an opportunity to, to make adjustments and to make changes, um, on our end. We won't have to go to one person or a committee to make those changes. We're going to be training every, all of our admins to do that. So here's our list of our departments. If you're looking for a particular department, everything's there. Now, if you're looking for the board of Selectmen, we have, you know, with all the boards that we have, another way to look for them. another way to look for them is through this list. Community, these two, these tabs, um, aren't as populated as they potentially could be, but what we were looking for was some catch-all areas so that we could direct people based on who they were or what they were looking for. Here's one for recreation. This one was interesting because we don't have a recreation department per se, but the town has a great, um, number of resources related to parks, recreational activities. And so we thought this would be a great opportunity to direct people to other places within Tops Field. So we could list, you know, all the various fields, um, the Essex Trails, I know Bradley Palmer Park is here. So we're using this not necessarily as a town department, but as a resource for people to be able to be directed to various recreation in the town. And schools is pretty straightforward. Um, so when you click on one of these, you'll go straight to, if you wanted the, um, the schools, you would just click on one, it'll bring you right to their website. So we're not doing any of the maintenance for that. We're just providing a link for those other websites within our website. Facts, I mean, this is taken right from the other website, really just what are you looking for? And, um, we have a quick list. So where do I go for? Again, another shortcut, if you know what you're, you're looking for, trash sticker or, um, there's a whole list, find it fast, what are you looking for? Click on T for trash and you'll find your way there. So that's one way that people can find what they're looking for. And I'm going to go back to the home so that we can get out of this. Where's my little home? Let's, let's see, let's go to the home.
Actually, um, above FAQs, Kelly, Sue, the blue.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, all right, so another way you can find information. Um, actually, before I go into that, we'll just say, if you look, the, the format here is intended so that all of the information over here, are there more standing documents, more like a library? Um, so about Tops Field, our directory, our hours, um, uh, trash and recycling. We get a lot of calls, a lot of foot traffic for trash and recycling. So we had it prominently put right on the list, forms, documents, meeting minutes. We have all of those over here as sort of fixed documents. And, um, down here, some easy functions and buttons for paying a bill, getting public records, volunteering, uh, and just a contact us form. On this side, it's meant to be more dynamic, on the other side of the page over here. So this is where we would put all of our news in rotation so that we can post an event and, and time it so that it'll go on in a certain day and drop off at a certain day and it'll automatically update. So these are just some dummy news, just to keep us, um, you know, just to help us with our design. Um, so we can list any number of different news and announcements. Also, when you go into the different departments, they can also do their own news and announcements based on their particular department.
Can we have a question?
Sure.
Under news, um, are the, in that particular case, the eight most recent, um, entries are the ones that automatically appear there?
Yeah.
The question I would ask is, even though it says view all, would it possibly make sense to put the date it was posted, um, next to the titles so that there's a bit of a sense of how comprehensive it is? It might also help people looking back.
That, that's a very good suggestion. The, the issue that we have with that, and we've talked this, we've talked this through a lot, is that you only have a certain, like even the fact that day hangs over is, is kind of bothering me.
Maybe when that opens up.
What you would do is you would click right on here, we'll see what it looks like. You click on there. So if you're interested and has materials, there's the date and there's all the information, where it's going to be, what the time is.
No, you, questions answered with posted, thank you. That's what I wanted.
You got it? Okay.
To see the posted on September fourteenth.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. So you know how old this website looking at?
Exactly. And our hope is that you can never go on there and find something that is going to be so outdated because hopefully it'll be put in there right and it'll drop off automatically. We won't have to spend as much time.
How many, how many does it maintain?
Um, I think it'll maintain as many as we need, it's just that it keeps scrolling. So you're not going to see, so we'll have to have sort of an internal protocol for which ones go first. So obviously, it'll probably be chronological. However, if you want to take, the news is intended to be like that, that the top, you know, the, the, the issue, the, the item that you really want to bring people's attention to. However, we have a more detailed calendar down here and we have a very, a few different options that people can follow so that they can be more in tune with some of the other types of news that we have. So we have meetings. What we've done, and we're calling them public meetings. This is a calendar that only the town clerk is going to be able to approve for publishing. This is going to be a way that we want to be able to centralize our meeting publishing schedules. Um, at some point, when we get this down, we might be able to eliminate the outside paper box and use this as our 24-hour meeting posting site. If the meeting is on the public meetings, it means that it's been reviewed by the town clerk in conformance with open meeting law and that it meets all of the requirements that's required by law to host a public meeting.
All the meetings that are on the date that is highlighted will appear there.
Correct.
And if it continues on, there's too many of them, there'll be some kind of an indicator that you should scroll.
Well, here's one on the 13th. Look, there's five different meetings. So they're all popping up when you go scroll. And over here, it's just going to show you the most immediate ones coming up. But when you go on the date, if you're looking for the date, they'll all show up.
Okay, live, thank you.
So here's on the 14th, Board of Selectmen, 7:30. Okay, so some meetings, if we have a lot, it's just going to just show, it'll show up as soon as you scroll over.
Kelly, can I go back to, I didn't finish my question on the news? Um, some of those things, like water quality report, whenever that's published, that should stay up until the next one comes out.
Not necessarily. The reason why is because water quality report might be great the first week it comes out.
It'll be elsewhere.
But 365 days a year, it might not be important. We might have other news that takes precedence over the water quality report.
Of course, no, I think it would take precedence, but I hate to see it just automatically drop off unless you know you could find it someplace else.
Exactly, which is why we have, we have public records here, we have forms and documents here. We have, if you want to see the water quality report, you can look for it up in the water department, in departments and look underwater. Um, there's a, there's a lot of different ways that we can get information to people or to help them. Or you can just search for it, water quality report right up there in the search box. The issue we have here is just like, you know, with advertising and we're trying to, and what, and some of this we'll have to play around with is, how do you determine what every department thinks that their information is going to be more important than someone else's? That front page is going to be controlled by our office. So effectively, the Board of Selectmen will have a large say in that because I take my direction from you. And if you think that the water quality report should be first and foremost on this list every day.
No, 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 that's.
No, no, just as, as, as an example.
That's not at all what I'm trying to say. I, we'll talk later in this, so we'll see how it actually works.
But there will be people, there will be other organizations that feel that their material might be more important. So we're going to be sort of in the policing role, but taking leadership and direction from the board in terms of what you feel is most important for people to be seeing and reading and hearing.
As an example, Kelly, just view all, what happens if you press that view all?
That's the question, how many, does that open?
As many as you need.
That's how you see on that one.
That's everything.
But that, and, and the question is, how long does everything last?
As long as you want it to.
Do you put an expiration?
You can, yes.
So for instance, hazardous materials drop-off day. And you put a hat, um, or is it just a matter of manually remembering, oh, that happened this weekend? We're going to take it off on Monday?
When you set it up, when we enter in an event, we can set a start date, an end date. And we can even, yeah, we can even decent, like, put it behind.
If we want to keep it on for a longer period of time, we can do it. If it's something that's going to be ending after a certain period, for instance, an announcement about a fair, that obviously would probably come off.
Exactly. And we can also take them off temporarily. So once a year, we have a hazardous materials drop-off day. We don't want to have to be putting it in every single year. So we'll just, we'll unpublish it until we need it again next year. So that's, that's what I mean about the real, the flexibility and the ease of use for this. And this isn't just about me and Sue having to go in and do this. Departments will be able to put these on, um, themselves and will sort of just be an oversight. So town offices moving, um, you know, so, so this takes a little bit of, um, getting used to, but, um, let me see, where else can we go from here? So, paying a bill, that's already on our current website, we're just trying to highlight it. Over here is meant to be more dynamic, so this is going to be stuff that, information that's going to move around based on what we feel is more important or the timing of a particular event. Um, subscribe to e-Alerts. This will be an opportunity. People can click on here to e-Alerts and if they want to be alerted for whenever the Board of Selectmen posts a meeting or whenever the town clerk posts a meeting, when you subscribe to e-Alerts, you'll have check boxes. You can check off which boards you want to get meeting minutes for. If somebody posts a meeting, um, someone posts a meeting agenda, you can get notified. Somebody issues meeting minutes, then you could be notified. Um, Tops Field cable, again, it's just the, people want to access our cable programming, they would click on that just like we do now. And of course YouTube, if they wanted to view all of our meeting, our regular meetings, they could click there. And then finally, emergency alerts is, um, we are working with a rec center to get this active so that people could, um, actually go online and subscribe to an emergency alert system that would allow them to be notified, um, if there's, um, public safety alert messages that go out. Um, I probably have to get more information before we go live.
Is this part of the reverse 911 system?
Same idea, yeah. So rec center is going to be offering that to us, so we would just be essentially going through their link to allow people to have access to that website to sign up for those, um, alerts. So, and then finally, over here, we have our, sort of a dynamic calendar at the bottom. And this is meant to be a good cross, cross-reference for people. We were trying to designate public meetings, meaning the town, the official town meetings of public bodies overseen through the town clerk and segregate those from our events. Now, there might be some, there might be some events that overlap. Um, for instance, if we're going to have an event at the same day as a, I don't know, Board of Selectmen meeting with a special finance forum, we could post that in the events. We could also post it as a public meeting. But the real intent of this is really just to be a central location where any, even, um, we, the cultural council has, um, told us they'd be interested in overseeing a lot of cultural events that they oversee, they would have the access to put events on there and to sort of track those. So we were careful.
Things like that?
What's that?
Movie night would, would that sort of make a lot of sense?
So, um, the police department, when they did their movie night, that would go right into events. Um, and here's one, services, we are hoping to populate this area. Now, there's nothing there now, but what we hope to do with that is hazardous pickup day, trash schedule, recycling schedule, um, you know, anything related to those types of services. And we'll notice that, you know, depending on what time of the season, composting, when the composting facility is open, um, we can all put the services in there at that calendar. And then finally, this is one that I'll be working with the, um, C, with the COA on. Um, we wanted an opportunity to really try to get more people to, not, and not just seniors, not just our senior population, but all of our residents to see the kind of programming that we're putting on for our seniors and for our community. Um, so we are going to be working with them to see if there's some way that we can efficiently, um, combine our efforts to give basically some front page access that can also publicize the senior activities and the COA and all the things that they're doing so that we can get them a little bit more, um, um, attention from the general public and, um, give them an opportunity to place some of their, um, programming right on the front page. Now, I originally had thought, oh, maybe the library. The library has its own website and because they're under a separate authority, the, um, library trustees, they decided that they wanted to just stay with their, their own current website and not have to worry about posting to two different places, which is completely understandable. But I chose the seniors because I do know how much of an effort the Board of Selectmen and because the COA is under the authority of the Board of Selectmen. I thought that this would be a perfect opportunity for us to be working a little bit closer with the COA so that we could really publicize a lot of the great things that we're doing for all of our residents, but especially with the, the new investments in the, um, the senior set, like our senior staffing levels. So that's just, and down below, you'll see there's this little staff login. This is where all of our staff will click on, will put in our access information. That's where we basically have, you know, command central for, um, department operations. An individual department, now which one can, should I just go into, what do you think? So should I go into departments for Board of Selectmen or, I'm looking for one to give an example.
Oh, Consul on Aging, Paula's done a really nice job.
Oh, okay, right. So right now, everyone, all the department heads are really going through their website, making sure we've got updated information and just fooling around and practicing with it to see, like what we can do. So, um, pictures of their latest, well, obviously the Meals on Wheels. So they have, they can have their own news over here. So they have things over here that are from, automatically, the department news will, will show what the town's central website is showing until they start putting in their own news. So if Paula decided she wanted to put in news that said, um, Meals on Wheels, drivers, celebrating, blah, 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 she could just update this and that would actually go back to, oh, sorry. Went a little, went a little crazy here. Not used to, not using the, um, mouse pad. Consul on Aging, okay. But all of the different, see, the, the basic layout of each department's site will be the same generic layout as the front page of the website so that we have the continuity. These buttons over here, um, is where we can, the departments can actually do their own buttons to bring people closer to whatever, whatever information they need. So in this case, she had senior services and it's probably a listing of all their activities. Our contact info is over here with the hours of operation. Um, you can put, um, you know, quick links down below. If there's links to some COA activities or outside agencies, we can put the links there. And then there's also our staff contacts so that people can contact us and also our board members. We're also in the process of getting pictures. In fact, on Monday night, um, we'll have, um, Eric Roth will be available to take a picture of the board so that we can use that for the town report and also for the website. So that we would really like to be able to have, like, maybe one of these buttons could have a button where it says staff. And then you click on, there's a picture of Paula and Beth and all of the staff from that office. And it really could allow us the opportunity to, um, just really put a name with a face. Like here we got, that's pretty cool actually, Beth and Mary Lou. Um, so this could be like, this is like, could be a scrolling slideshow of the activities. But we really want to try to personalize our site and the town a little bit more so that people understand that we're not just bricks and mortar, that we're people that are trying to do our best to help, um, make the town a better place. So we had some money left over from the grant, so the cost for doing, developing the website came to about $9,000. We had a $10,000 grant. And then we use a portion of the remaining funds to, um, to have, to hire Eric Roth to do some pictures, uh, for us and I'm, I'm sure at a great discount. But he is going around and going to help us do our stock photos. We got some headshots of a lot of the department heads and the staff. So we're really hoping to put a little personal touch on it and get, um, some more pictures in there and so that as the seasons change and as, um, we are doing different events, we can update the website, make it fresh and more helpful for people.
Kelly, before you go off that, um, at the bottom there, we have those rows of dots. Some websites use that as an indicator, it highlights and, or you know where you are in looking at them. And you know how many there are. Is that what that is there?
I'm not sure. That's the first time I've actually seen them.
Okay.
They might be the, yeah, I think here might be the pictures then. Can you see it?
Yeah, it tells you how many photos there are, so you have a good of an idea.
I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I didn't either, honestly, this is the first time I saw it done.
And if, again, I don't know if it's possible, but if they could just get that to contrast color, then you'd know where you were in the sequence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's great, thank you. That answers my question.
No, this is, um, actually.
You can also use.
Very pleasantly surprised to see all those pictures. What's that?
You can use the arrows that are in the margins of the photos.
Yeah.
But those will only scroll individually across. If you wanted to jump to an event later, you could then take a stab and hit sometime, you know, a bunch of dots down the row.
Yeah.
That's nice.
So anyway, so everything else down below is pretty standard, but I, I'm just really excited that we have the ability to, um, update this information, um, in a more decentralized way while still being able to maintain control for our office in terms of making sure that content is appropriate, making sure, hey, I just saw a picture of myself. Oh, look at that, oh, boy, very nice.
Shaking his head.
This is great. So anyway, that's, that's basically a quick run-through. And if you have any final comments or thoughts, I'm happy to, um, we're doing some finishing touches now. If you wanted to send me an email or talk with Sue or I about any suggestions, some of it, you know, the best part about this is even once we go live, we have a lot of opportunity to continue to enhance it wherever and whenever we can. Um, we have a lot of flexibility in how we design our own freestanding pages. Um, what we won't have flexibility with however, is the overall layout, which did take quite some time to design. But I think that what we came up with, I think, is a really great, um, opportunity to sort of show a little bit of the best of a lot of different areas where the town really has just a warm and, and neighborly community feel to it. And, um, wherever possible, we'll try to incorporate more pictures, more people instead of just the buildings. Um, and so if you have any thoughts or feedback, feel free to send me an email or give us a call and.
Is there any money left and/or a plan to, um, oftentimes you have to use something like this for a few months. It's then that it becomes apparent there's a better way of doing something. Is there some of the money from the original grant that could be applied to make those changes that are perhaps more substantive and more in terms of the ongoing encoding? And others are not spending it all just on the live day.
Right. The, the answer to that is no, because it is a grant and it runs out. And they did allow us a few months' extension beyond the fiscal year. And once the money is gone, it's gone, however...
But you just said we haven't spent it all.
Well, there's like $200 left. And we were just gonna use it for training materials and binders so that, so that everybody would have them. However, the beauty of Virtual Town Hall and this website and the way this, this works is that when we have an issue, when we have a problem or a concern, or if we wanted to, there's nothing that would stop us from saying, you know, we really hate that header and people think it's too boring. You know, it's pretty, but it's boring. You know, I mean, like anything, if we had to come up with, if we had to propose a budget request to update that next year, certainly that's always an option. And it certainly won't be nearly as much as it costs to develop the entire site. On the other hand, a lot of the parts of this website are very versatile. And also, we're provided with some other features are the fact that it's gonna be ADA compliant and you won't know this from the front, but there's, like, whenever you put in a new picture, for example, you have to write a description of it, which, so that when it's, when that feature is used by someone who's hearing impaired, that, that there's certain requirements that Virtual Town Hall requires that we do before they'll upload a picture. Another thing that it does is they allow, they have, they have a desktop support, 365 days a year, not 24/7, however, they have a great support team and they're always willing and they, they have desktop support. So we have somebody that we can call at any time if we're having an issue or a problem.
Is that built into the contract?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's part of our maintenance fee. It's costing $4,600 a year for maintenance and that was in our budget for this year, but that's what that covers. And the one final thing that made it very appealing to the state when we presented this was the security and enhancement features, the fact that it's supported by Virtual Town Hall and their security certificate covers us from information. The other thing is the amount of storage that we have on this database. There's virtually no limit really to a lot of the documents that we can be providing on there, assuming we had the time and resources to download or upload information and put it there. But they're willing and that would be a part where we have our forms and documents. This is really going to be the place where we are going to be asking a lot of department, department heads to be taking information that is publicly accessible anyway, rather than having to make copies, to search it out, to make copies, to charge somebody for a document. To the extent that we can be putting that information on the website, we'll be able to mitigate, help, to at least try to mitigate some of the public records requests that we've had to, to deal with. So we'll be trying to constantly be getting people to put different forms and documents online so that way we meet the needs of the public records law. But also, it will hopefully reduce the foot traffic that's required directly related to public records requests. So there's a lot of great potential with this and functionality and flexibility. And we've had one training session and we also did work into the contract that we're also gonna have another follow-up training session with Virtual Town Hall. They're gonna do a desktop, we'll do like a, go to a meeting, a virtual meeting, and to troubleshoot some of the items that we can't figure out on our own. So this is a work in progress, but certainly by the 22nd, when we go live, it'll be in really good shape and, but we always have the potential to make it that much better. So if anyone has any suggestions, you know, by all means,